Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you. With that, I'll call this regular school board meeting for Independent School District number 544 to order. Our first item of business tonight is to establish our quorum. So clerk, all right, Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Kelly Graff.
Here.
Jenny Christensen.
Here.
Missy Hermes present.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. Our agenda is slightly modified from what we received in our packet, so I would seek a motion to approve the agenda that's in front of us.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved and we'll move on to resolutions. We want to provide thank you to the Otter Elementary PTO for their donation to purchase balance boards for Mr. Schneeburger's Fied class at Lincoln School. A thank you to Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation for their donation to Marissa Silber and Nagel's classroom at Adams Elementary School. Thank you to the Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation for their donation to purchase books for the third grade classrooms at McKinley Elementary School. Thank you to the VFW Post 612 for their donation to the middle school weight room at Kennedy Secondary School. Thank you to Simon Erlinson for his donation to the middle school strength training program at Kennedy Secondary School. And thank you to Sarah and Rylan Stephan for their donation to the United Club at Kennedy Secondary School. Sorry, the Unified Club, I read that incorrectly. So thank you to all of those donors to the school. Will someone offer that resolution and provide for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving? Oh, no? Clerk, will you please do a vote? Yep. Kelly Graff.
Yes.
Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. All right, and at this time, we have a public meeting presentation regarding our public school audit results. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Drake for introduction and arrangement.
Yes, I'm going to turn the floor over to Brayden, representing Aid Bailey. And we've been partners with Aid Bailey on our audit for a number of years now.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And maybe I'll just quick double check one last time if you're able to hear me pretty well and see my screen as well.
We can hear you and see the screen. Thanks.
Yeah, perfect. Sounds good. Yeah, so my name is Brayden Axman. I have been involved in the audit with the district now for just about five years. Today, I'll kind of be going through this year's executive summary. And that's just kind of a high level version of this year's audited financial statements. And hopefully, it's a little bit less boring than our 100-page audit report. So able to kind of go through that. And luckily, we were able to put in some historical data. So I think a lot of our graphs, we go back just about 10 years and maybe can see more of trends within, yeah, the last few years. So kind of started off with the main goal of every audit that we have, and that's issuing an audit opinion. This year, the audit opinion that we did issue was an unmodified opinion, or as a lot of people will call it, a clean audit opinion. Of all the opinions that we were able to give, that is the one to shoot for, that's kind of the best one. So that was issued in this year's financial statements, and it has been in the past as well. So with that audit opinion, it kind of involves numerous management responsibilities, as well as auditor responsibilities. And that's just ensuring that the financial statements are prepared using the accounting principles generally accepted in the U.S., or commonly referred to as GAAP, and that the financial statements do not contain any material misstatements and that they're fairly presented. So those first two bullets there are kind of management's responsibilities. And then from there, our audit responsibility is to give an opinion, which is based on our professional opinion. And that kind of gives reasonable, but not absolute assurance that both of those things were true. I say reasonable over absolute assurance because obviously, every single transaction that happens throughout the year, we're not able to test every single one of them, but we do use kind of risk assessment, deem where the most risky audit areas are, and then we test the more significant in terms of dollar value transactions throughout the year. So again, that was, the audit opinion was that unmodified opinion, which is the one to shoot for. So along with your guys' audit this year, just like years past, there was a single audit, or federal funds audit portion as well. As you guys did reach that $750,000 threshold, you guys were just over 2.6 this year, actually. And we did have a single audit, which we did test two major programs, one being the special education program and the other one being the child nutrition program. You're going to see here, and I'll just want to quick point this out, everywhere throughout this slide, you'll see some preliminary wording on this. And that just relates to the delay in the compliance supplement for 2025 being released. A lot of that is due to actually the government being shut down, and we've never really seen it this late where they issue that final compliance supplement, which is kind of the, what we use to determine the areas we have to test for each program. They actually did release a draft of it. So we have completed all of our testing based on that draft, and we don't anticipate there to be any changes. But just unfortunately, we can't issue our single audit portion of the financials until then. So this year, you're going to see essentially, we'll issue the financial statements, which was done earlier. And then as we're able to, we'll issue a single audit reports as well. So again, this year, we haven't quite issued that yet, but we have everything kind of lined up and ready to go. So as soon as that compliance supplement gets released by the federal government, that'll get released. And there was an unmodified opinion on both of those major programs we tested as well. Moving on to the federal or the financial statement portion. So even with that unmodified opinion or that clean opinion, we still can have findings throughout our audit procedures that are identified. The financial statement portion here, you'll see that there's two items listed. They're very common ones throughout all of our districts, and they're ones that you would have seen in the past as well. So that relates to the preparation of the financial statements and any material journal entries that were made. Those two kind of go hand in hand as we're doing the financial statements. A lot of times, there's just a couple of areas where you do have some entries that relate to that as well. So just those two findings here this year again, and like I said, those are the same ones as kind of past years. In terms of the federal award portion, we do not have any findings. And then as well as the Minnesota legal compliance, no issues there that were noted either throughout our audit procedures. Another kind of unique thing that happened this year is there was a new standard that we had to implement for you guys. This was called GASB 101. And what that kind of related to was compensated absences. So it was kind of an older GASB that kind of got modernized here this year. And what it kind of related to the most part is kind of sick leave. A lot of times, there's, you know, sick leave balances that have been earned that not necessarily are paid out, but there is a more likely than not chance that that does get paid out through the, I guess, each employee's tenure with you guys. So as they kind of keep being employed at the district, obviously, there's some amounts there that kind of get used throughout the rest of their employment. So that's kind of just putting an estimate on that. And it did end in a $4 million liability on the government-wide financial statement portion. So nothing that impacted your guys' fund financial statements, but just on the government-wide. And with that, you'll also notice within the financial statements, there's a few footnotes and stuff that did just have a restatement portion as well, bringing that balance on at the beginning of the year. But that, again, nothing due to error, but just the new implementation that the district went through. So moving on to some cash graphs here. This graph, you'll notice, is mostly impacted by state aid payments. And a lot of this is the main driver that, we'll kind of go through it in a few slides here, but your ADM or your student counts. So as you see, kind of increases in that, that'll kind of be the biggest jump that you'll notice or reasoning behind the additional cash balances. Another thing to kind of note is this does not include any of your capital project funds. So I think there was about $500,000 here at the end of the year in that. But this 25 million is just true with like district funds that were not based off of any loans or debt issued or anything like that. So as you can see, it's been some constant growth here. And just from the prior to current year, another 2.7 or so million increase there. So I will kind of move on to some specific funds. So the general fund being here's the main one. And again, here's kind of your ADM served numbers. So see from going just under 3,000 up to 3,250 here. So a lot of that cash balance and maybe some increases in revenue is going to be due to that here this year. So so here's a little bit of a budget to actual graph for the general fund. Probably won't touch on too much stuff here, but maybe worth noting is that top balance within the revenues, that state sources line. Obviously, with the special education being brought in-house now, rather than utilizing that co-op, there was a lot of additional state sources that had been received. So that's going to be a lot of that big jump there, as well as just having that increase in your student counts resulting in that additional state sources stuff. That other bucket balance is, I think there was a lot more IQM participation this year. So with that program, we did see some additional revenues come in, as well as some additional expenditures down below and a few of those other budget to actual comparison line items there. Other than that, I would say we'll probably keep, come back to this one more time. But just if you're looking at that change in fund balance being that 4 million, so in the general fund, you guys did increase by that 4 million. So it went from about 16 and a half million in 2024 to now just about 20.5, 20 and a half million. And we'll probably dive a little bit more into it in the coming slides of exactly which areas that fund balance relates to, but very healthy fund balance. So what does that mean? A positive fund balance contributes to favorable bond ratings. Additionally, allows you to kind of get some investment income and kind of serves as a rainy day or as any unexpected expenditures kind of come in, just having a little bit extra cushion there. So within that fund balance, like I mentioned, there's different buckets that can be included in the district's fund balance. Probably won't touch on a lot of them. The main ones in this next slide that you'll see result in some restrictions, while it's legally restricted. Also, the district can kind of put some money aside as just an assigned bucket, which is able to be moved in and out a lot more easily. And then there's just that unassigned bucket. So basically, can you set whatever the district decides to do. So here's kind of that graph that I'd mentioned, where you'll see different restrictions or changes in the types of the, that 20 million that we had just mentioned on that budget to actual slide. But of that unassigned version right there, you'll see the unassigned is about just over 11 and a half million. And then you'll see there's other stuff, a lot of it being due to the state aid. They kind of cause certain restrictions on that end. So whether it's for the long-term facility maintenance or whatever that might be. And then there's just a few assignments that the district continues to have as they kind of plan out certain projects. So and then that middle portion of this graph being that net change in fund balance again. So just over $4 million of an increase this year. Similar slide here, but just looking at it again, you're going to see that green portion of the graph throughout these last few years are all going to be that unassigned bucket. So not only did you have an increase in the fund balance this year, but there was also an increase in that unassigned portion as well. And that's, as you can see, just a solid growth over the last few years. So different recommendations on the fund balance. So the district does have a policy, and I think you guys have recently updated it as well. But for the year that we had audited, it was at that 8% of the annual budget, which would have been a target of about 3.5 million for your unassigned fund balance. And you guys were at just over 11 and a half million. So healthily above the district policy. And then also, GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, does recommend that the unrestricted portion of the fund balance is just no less than two months. So just over that 16% threshold of your regular expenditures throughout the year. That amount would have been 7.2 million, which is also below what the district is currently at. So above both of them. And kind of one last graph within those fund balance amounts. You'll see that red bar across the, all the years that being your district policy. And then just above that would be your 16%, that GFOA recommendation, which you guys were also above the past four, five, six years. So moving on to a few other funds, community service fund. So again, you're going to look, you'll see that you guys were just above 50,000, just a little bit above 50,000 in that fund balance. And it just kind of has been sufficient enough to kind of go on with operations throughout the past few years. So just down a little bit from last year, but still not a deficit, still in the green on that. So last fund to kind of go through here will be your food service fund. Again, an increase, so just over $1 million here, and an increase from the past few years. That kind of maroon graph is kind of moving along. Is the Minnesota statute portion, which is saying three months of your expenditures within the food service fund. And this year, that would have been just around 700,000. And like I said, you guys were at 1.1. So over that as well. And that kind of wraps up the food service portion. Kind of move on here to any questions you guys might have. But I did just want to quick say thank you to Renee and Jeff and the rest of the finance team as we kind of went through all of our audit procedures. I know we can be pretty good at bugging you guys for a bunch of requests from year end till now. So appreciate all the help that you guys have kind of gone through in getting us stuff kind of ready to go. And as we have requests, being very timely makes it easier on us. So appreciate it.
All right. Any questions on the audit or presentation regarding that?
Just a comment that we did, we did change the district policy to 16.67% for the fund balance minimum just last month. So that's the only change.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for attending virtually and giving us the presentation.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brayden.
Yep, have a good one.
You too. The public meeting will continue with Amelia Lamar, our curriculum director, giving us a presentation on the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report.
It's a mouthful.
It's a mouthful. It's a CACR, is what they call it, for short.
Nice acronym, CACR. I like it.
Yeah, it doesn't sound good. So good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Um, thank you for your time. Nice to see you all. Haven't been here in a while. So as Melanie said, I'm going to be presenting the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report, formerly known as the World's Best Workforce Report. So this is a comprehensive annual review required by Minnesota state law for us to assess and communicate our progress in five education areas. Fergus Falls Public Schools or ISD 544 refers to more than just our traditional brick and mortar schools. It also includes information from our Alternative Learning Center and IQ Academy. So if you go to the state's website, for example, and you look under Fergus Falls Public Schools, it would include information from all three of those areas. I will do my best to clarify what areas of this include all three of those or just one. So this presentation looks at, excuse me, five different areas. It used to be four, but they added that fifth one of lifelong learning since it has switched to CACR. So the first area here is school readiness. For this area, we look at the developmental progress across seven different areas for students as they enter kindergarten. In Otter Preschool, last year, we served 66 four- and five-year-olds that are now in kindergarten. Additionally, over 150 families participated in our Early Childhood Family Education Program. ECFE also includes home visits and outings to different areas such as Otter Cove, Prairie Wetlands, and.
Otter Tail County Museum.
Otter Tail County Museum. Thank you, Missy. 51 of the 66 Otter Preschool students that are now in kindergarten were considered fully ready for kindergarten. Of the remaining 15, 12 of those students had a previously established IEP and received special education services in an area not including speech. Of all kindergarten students, which is 125 of them this year, 95 were ready for kindergarten. The majority of students attended a preschool program somewhere. 25 students either are repeating kindergarten, did not attend a preschool program, or there was just a couple of them that did not have one listed and I wasn't able to get that information. So not assuming, I just categorize them as didn't attend, just to be safe. Okay? Students are screened for kindergarten readiness in their first few weeks of kindergarten across seven areas. And these are all based on the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress, which are provided by the Minnesota Department of Education, ESIP standards for short. It is not expected that children are, or, excuse me, that all children fully meet all of those areas upon entering kindergarten. It is understood that not all children are at the same developmental stages when they come to school. It is simply a guideline to understand what our students are bringing in to kindergarten. Okay? In order to best support their transition to school and learning. So what I did here is I divided, okay, that one caught up. I divided the ESIP standards into two primary categories, being academic and non-academic. So this slide here looks at the three academic areas first, which are math and science, reading, and writing. Looking at math and science, this looks at skills from naming basic shapes and colors to sorting objects into identifying categories, so forth. 88 kindergarten students were ready in this area, including 72% of Otter Preschool students. Next is reading. This would be probably the most challenging of all of the seven areas because it's the most abstract and looks at skills such as print awareness, recognizing letters, rhyming words, and understanding that letters themselves have sound. 76 students were ready in this area and they entered kindergarten this fall. And the last academic area looks at writing. And this is the physical act of writing, including shapes, letters, and various formations, and understanding writing as a form of communication. 97 students were ready in the area of writing, including 82% of Otter Preschool students. All of these skills are developed as students progress through school and in kindergarten directly. And these are good numbers. We're off to a really good start. We have a group of students who came to us very ready to learn. The other four skills with those ESIP standards are the non-academic aspects. I don't think I have them in the same order that I listed on the bottom, but I'll do listening and speaking first. And this includes probably what you think includes, the stamina of listening, being able to listen to a storybook. Speaking and answering questions in order to communicate following two to three simple step directions. 112 students were ready in this area, including 90% of Otter Preschool students. The next one here, nearly all students at 123 were ready in the area of physical development. Outside of running and playing, it also looks at, excuse me, physical skills, such as being able to successfully use the restroom independently, as well as both large and fine motor skills. 100% of Otter Preschool students were ready in this area. Third here, we have social and emotional development with 107 students ready. And this looks at skills such as being able to communicate their needs. So the physical side of it might be using the restroom independently. This part is communicating to their teacher when they need to use the restroom. It's an important skill for kindergarten. And having a general understanding of the rules when they're at school, their routines, how to interact with peers, and how that's different than maybe interacting with siblings, and just the idea of personal space in their own learning area. The last skill in our ESIP standards would be the area of art, where 117 students were ready. And this includes being able to play creatively, use imagination, and a willingness to explore. The second goal, yeah, sorry, I pushed a button. The second goal is titled Closing Achievement Gaps. So we're looking at last school year of 2425, 19.4% of students received special education services and 41% qualified for free and reduced lunch. These percentages refer to ISD 544 as a whole, which again includes our brick and mortar schools, ALC, and IQ Academy. All right, don't panic. There's a lot of numbers here. I am not going to go through each and every row. However, this shows the proficiency percentages across many different demographics between ISD 544, again as a whole, and the state of Minnesota. Some of these breakdowns might include a small handful of students, while some include multiple hundreds. The majority of areas scored higher than the state average. There are a couple of areas of reflection. For example, the difference between our free and reduced price lunch population and our non-free and reduced lunch population. This is a challenging concept, but as always, we will continue to search for ways to support all of our students in their learning regardless of what background and experiences they bring to us. Going into our third area, we will look at career and college readiness. So we have a continually growing career and technical education program. Work-based learning, for example, offers students opportunities to explore various career fields they may be interested in. And that includes researching, jobs, job shadowing, and even interning in that area. We also offer more than 45 CTE courses across a wide range of areas, which I'll get more into detail when we get to goal number five. At the bottom of this slide here, you'll see some ACT information. The ACT is a standardized test designed to measure college and career readiness by assessing student skills in English, math, reading, and science reasoning. The composite score for Fergus Falls High School, so KSS, was 20.9 as compared to the national composite score of 19.4. We also scored higher than the national average in all sub-tested areas. Students are quite passionate at our high school and vocal about their CTE choices and opportunities that they get to take in their time here with us as they explore various skills and interests and start thinking about what their lives will look like after high school. Our fourth area is about high school graduation. So graduation rates are offset in reporting by the Minnesota Department of Education. Therefore, the graduation rates you see here are from spring of 2024. So going back two springs. Kennedy High School had a graduation rate of just under 93%. The ALC at about 65, and IQ Academy at just under 66%. A quick dive into IQ Academy. This is an all online public school with students located all across the state. So I know this is 2024, but I'm going to give you just a few numbers on last year's students. Okay? Last year, 2425 at IQ Academy, we began the school year with 706 students enrolled across grades K-12. Over the course of the year, however, we served a total of 1,549 students, but ended the year with 960 students. Throughout the year, there was a total of 589 withdrawals. When MDE calculates the graduation rate of IQ, they look at the school the student has been enrolled with the longest. That means it's really hard for us to predict exactly what our graduation rate's going to be with IQ from the state's perspective. But what we can do is we can keep track of the students we have enrolled in the spring, in their senior year, at the time of graduation. So again, this is looking back at last spring. Of the 100 seniors we had enrolled in IQ Academy last spring, 70 of them graduated on time, meaning within four years. 85 of those 100 were on track to graduate on time, which means the other 15 came into IQ not having the credits they needed to graduate on time. That doesn't mean they don't graduate, they just don't graduate within four years, which is what's calculated. Okay? Of the, so what did I say? I said seventy of one hundred graduated in the spring, but eight, excuse me, eighty-five were on track to graduate. That remaining fifteen that were on track did not, but didn't graduate on time either because they might have dropped out last minute, didn't pass classes, whatever. Ten of them continued on and then graduated at the end of this last summer. And then if we look at the ALC, the ALC, students in that program, enter the ALC already identified as one or more years behind their graduation schedule. And the ALC provides highly individualized programming for students working toward their high school diploma, while those students are often working full-time, living independently, sometimes they have dependents, or whatever their life situation may be. Students at the ALC are often, or, excuse me, they often express interest in a lot of our CTE courses such as autos or small engines. Our ALC Director, Carrie Johnson, and the teachers at our ALC do a truly fantastic job of working with each one of those students individually to help them work toward achieving their high school diploma in a way that fits their lives, whether that's within four years, five years, or whatever it is that fits their circumstances. Our last area is the new one to this report, and it focuses on preparing students for lifelong learning. So as I mentioned earlier, we offer more than forty-five elective courses across a wide range of areas. Some of those areas include robotics, health sciences, manufacturing, industrial tech, family and consumer science, business, computer science, the arts, agricultural science, and autos. Sorry if I missed one or two in there. And then again, I briefly mentioned earlier, our work-based learning program, I would argue is one of our more popular choices and continues to grow more and more every year, as students continue to desire those real experiences in various fields as they learn what they might want to do with their lives. Some of our CTE courses also offer certifications. An example would be our CNA course, where students leave that course with a full CNA certification. Our high school staff and administrators work quite diligently and directly with students. Again, they are quite vocal and passionate about their course options, which is really, that's good, we want them to be. And we try to create the most rounded and robust course offerings to help prepare students for their lives after they leave us here. With that being said, we continue to work toward growth. We are making growth in all areas, and we will continue to evaluate those gaps to meet the full potential of all of our students and grow ourselves. Questions from the board?
Any questions for Ms. Lamar? Thank you for your report.
Thank you for your time.
The next presentation will be done by our Superintendent Jeff Drake. It's the twenty-four, twenty-five Achievement and Integration Plan, and we will turn it over to you.
Yes, good evening. So this is a report that you're very familiar with. We do this every year. However, this is a little earlier than you're used to. Normally, this would be done in December, but the state moved up the reporting date considerably earlier than what they have in the past, and so this presentation's following suit with that timeline. So the report overview, the Achievement and Integration Program is a state-mandated initiative by the Minnesota Department of Education designed to address two primary goals across participating school districts. And I should mention, the reason that we qualify for this program is because of our proximity to the Pelican Rapids School District. Number one is to close academic gaps, so narrowing the achievement disparities or gaps in areas like reading and math between students of color and/or students receiving free or reduced-priced lunch, FRL, and their peers. And goal number two is to increase integration, reducing racial and socioeconomic isolation and segregation by creating intentional opportunities for students from different backgrounds to learn and interact together, often through partnerships and collaborative activities with neighboring districts. So we do have two achievement goals. One is in the area of reading and one is in the area of math. The reading proficiency goal is an examination of proficiency ranks or rates between those that qualify for free and reduced lunch and those that do not, so are non-free and reduced lunch. And our goal, these plans are three years in duration, and we report after each of the three years, each year of the three-year total. And so our goal was to decrease the gap between our free and non-free and reduced students by two points each year from the start of year one to the end of year three. Our baseline, which was our twenty-twenty-four test results, had indicated a seventeen point eight percent gap, and our twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five results indicate the twenty-two point four percent gap, so the gap widened. There are a number of different possibilities for this that we can dive into. If both your free and non-free students have increased proficiencies, but the non-free and reduced lunch students are becoming more proficient at a greater rate than the not, than the free and reduced ones, then both sides are being successful, but the gap widens. You could have the free and reduced students stay stable with their proficiency rates, but if your non-free and reduced lunch students are less proficient than the year before, it actually closes the achievement gap, even though I would argue that the overall results of the district weren't necessarily positive. And then the other option is that the non-free and reduced don't have any movement, but your free and reduced students show improvement, and so the gap lessens. And again, I would argue that what you really want is both groups becoming more proficient, but the free and reduced group becoming more proficient at a faster rate. That's the goal of the district when you look at these. So then we shift into math proficiency gaps, again, looking for two-point. Notice our starting gap was wider in the area of math than it was in reading, but the same two percent reduction per year in that gap was again the goal. Started out with a baseline twenty-twenty-four of fifteen point five. Looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five results, the gap again increased to twenty-six percent. And so we're going the wrong direction here. This is an item that we have brought up for initial discussion with the building principals, and will continue to look at potential causation. One of the things that's a little frustrating about the results is because we, a couple of years ago, we really retooled our MTSS model, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and that was with Title and with our ATSS interventions, and we've seen really positive results with that. And so because of the positive results we've seen with our intervention model, I would have thought that this gap would have closed somewhat instead of gotten wider. So we have some work to do on those academic goals. On the integration goal, fostering cross-cultural competence and community, we're doing really well here with our cultural immersion opportunities. Students reported on a post-survey an increased comfort level interacting with diverse demographics, and that has resulted in a ninety-four point four, four percent of participation or participants showing that the activity increased their comfort level and/or ability to interact with someone from a different background. So that's a very positive step for the district. The integration efforts with Pelican Rapids and Underwood, this is one of our main activities. It's kind of a Jeopardy game that they do has been with the Spanish Olympics, has been really, really successful. We've done this for a number of years. All three school districts enjoy the activity, and it ends up being a really positive cross-cultural event. We also met our teacher equity goal, and that is to increase access for students of color, American Indian students, to educators trained in culturally relevant pedagogy to eighty percent by twenty-twenty-six, up from fifty percent in twenty-twenty-three. We're actually far ahead on this, this goal. We've done a lot of work increasing our cultural awareness, looking at our own implicit bias, et cetera, and so, again, feel real good about the results that we have from that goal. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Do you feel like the, I don't know, the result is a bit broken because you're looking at progress of kids, you know, and if it widens the gap just because of things that are actually good, but, I mean, is it, is it something that other superintendents have have looked at going to our legislature and asking for a change in the requirements of this to show a little bit more of an accurate, I mean, it's a fairly new mandate since twenty-nineteen, it looks like, but, I mean, do they tweak these things, or they just put them out, then this is what you get?
Yeah, the achievement integration, that, that's been around for quite a while. I'm gonna say every bit of ten to twelve-plus years. What we've had some internal conversations about, and your plan has to be approved. It's actually a pretty meticulous approval process, but we talked about shifting away from proficiency rates on the MCA in the future and looking more at growth rates instead. So are students having, averaging one or more years of growth in the area of reading and math? Because if we're doing that, that really is indication of really good work taking place academically. So whether the MDE would approve a plan that shifts from proficiency rates to growth rates, I don't know the answer to that yet, but it would be one way that I think our data might be more useful to us in the overarching view of our district.
Do we get that data through this process, and then we just have it, it's just not, it's not required to be on this, but do we have that kind of data, like what, how our kids are progressing, you know, even the ones that are not doing so great, and then we see some progress? Do we have that?
We do have growth data, yes.
If you've been writing in the paper and speaking to us about the MCAs and how our results on the MCA are affected by parents opting their children out, of that, is that having an effect on, would that, that would be correlate with the numbers that you saw there?
It's a great question. My initial thoughts are no, and this is the reason why. So as we look at the students that are more likely to be opted out of the test, first of all, it's primarily our sophomores and juniors. Most of our younger students are still taking the exam, but when you look at the students that are opting out, it is a higher percentage by quite a bit of the students in the top half academically of their class. And so it can be difficult to talk about, but there has been, I mean, decades that show that the socioeconomic disparity is highly correlated with student achievement. And so that is one of the struggles that we've had in public education, is how to more effectively reach those students that are from a lower socioeconomic background or environment. So I would have thought, Ms. E, great question, but I would have thought if, because of the correlation with achievement and socioeconomic level, if we were having more of the students in the top half of the class not take it, I would have projected or predicted that our gap would have actually decreased though.
Well, my next question sort of is in that same vein. How accurate are our free and reduced lunch numbers? Because all meals are free, so if I am a parent, I know that my, all my children's meals are being paid for, why would, if I don't need to, why would I go online and sign up for free and reduced lunch, meals?
Yes, we know that our free and reduced is being under-reported because of the change in the way that the state is approaching that, absolutely.
I guess you took my question, but that's okay. So I'll just take it off in a different, a little different tangent. So what I see happening is because there's fewer students applying for free and reduced lunches because they're all free, then we have a much smaller pool of students in that free and reduced category. But we're still supposed to close the gap between, historically, there was this many people in that gap, or this many people in that category, this many, now there's a smaller number of people in this one and a larger number here. So to me, it's it's an unrealistic goal because you're comparing apples and oranges just because of the different size of the groups.
Yeah, you know, this, great questions. As I think through it, so let's just take a quick example. Let's say that you had, in prior years, you had a hundred students that qualified for free and reduced lunch, and we were using the old methods with paper and pencil applications, and then also direct certification at the state level. And now we move to today, and we have, let's call it seventy-five students that qualify for free and reduced lunch because everyone's getting a free meal, and there's really not an incentive to go out and do the paperwork. So that gap of twenty-five kids really shifted into the non-free and reduced grouping, and one would have thought that that would have actually brought the top closer to the, to the free and reduced lunch pieces. That's, that's what I would have thought that the data would have done.
Or if it would have been properly reported, it would have brought back the free and reduced lunch number up if the, right?
If it would have been properly reported, that doesn't necessarily mean your gap would have, would have decreased, because you would have still gone back to that pool of, in this example, a hundred kids compared to, you know, whatever was out there with your non-free and reduced kids. The goal really, and it speaks directly to our mission, is to just make sure that we're meeting every single child where they're at, that we are identifying where their learning gaps are, and that we are administering specific interventions that match the needs of the learning gap, and that we are progress monitoring to make sure those interventions are being effective in having or helping the student acquire the skills. The philosophy of our MTSS, I still say is spot-on. We just need to dig a little bit deeper to find out why that gap has increased.
Have you taken a look at what Mississippi has done since they went to the bottom, from the bottom of the states to almost throughout the states with their children?
I am, I am not familiar with what Mississippi's done.
Oh, well, then we should probably look at that because their third-grade reading went from the last in the states to almost the first in the states, and it's huge. And with the children of color there, much more diversity, I think that would be something great to look at for us as well.
Yep, we'll definitely take a look.
Also, wouldn't you be able to get some of that recording on, the records on how many records that we don't have on the free and reduced lunches? Because the state should have that, because when the community is on SNAP benefits, they get that summer EBT, which you're already gonna get that if you're on SNAP benefits, but the people that have to apply for it are the people that are more like the reduced lunches. So once they have some sort of records for us to see how many people were actually missing, and would we be able to load and say, hey, guys, I mean, I know we're doing some of it, but, hey, guys, can we get you to apply for this? Could we maybe push that a little bit more?
We can continue to push it. It is difficult in that about the only tangible benefit they have of doing the paperwork is if their students are involved in co-curricular activities because the participation fee drops down. The main advantage always was that free and reduced lunch piece, which has now been rendered irrelevant. But yes, we can for sure look at our students over the last, let's call it, five years, and look at our numbers who had qualified, and compare that proportionally. and look at our numbers who had qualified and compare that proportionally with our population to see where the gap, what kind of gap exists there. It is, so this is tied to compensatory revenue. There is a definite financial impact to districts that is pretty important. And there has been a lot of testimony, both with the House and Senate Finance Committees, on the impact of Direct Cert and what that's done to school revenue. In some cases, we were, we ended up being okay with the whole thing, but had they not done some whole harmless measures, there were rural Minnesota districts that were set to lose in excess of a half a million dollars in compensatory funding because of the changes.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent?
I think just one more comment on the free and reduced versus non-free and reduced. So much like when you talked about the MCAs, if those that are opting out are at the high end of their class rank, then that's gonna drive that down. So the inverse is true also if we had 100 students in free and reduced and now we have 75. If those 25 that didn't file for free and reduced moved over to their category, if they were towards the top of that group, that would increase the gap. Because they would move to the non-free and reduced from the free and reduced. So it depends on where, it depends on who's moving where. And so again, my concern is we're not comparing static groups of students as the years progress. We're comparing various iterations of that.
Yeah, the needles moved on us, right?
Yep.
Through no fault of our own, but yes.
Right, that might be one reason.
All right, thank you for the report. We'll move on to additional reports. And tonight, for the first time, we have our Human Resources Director, Amanda Griffin, here for a report. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work behind the scenes before you got to come to the board, so.
Thanks, Melanie. As Melanie said, my name's Amanda Griffin. I'm the HR Director, and I've not had the pleasure of meeting all of you, so I thought I'd start off by sharing just a little bit about myself. I started in the district back on March 31st, so I've been here for a few months. Prior, I have approximately 20 years of HR experience working in different industries. Most recently, I worked with Mahavi Atwa and the amazing team over there in nonprofit. Previous to that, most of my experience has been in manufacturing, roofing, lead smelting even, those types of industries, food processing. About five years or so ago, my husband and I moved our family back here. He's originally from Battle Lake, so he's very excited to be back in his home area and my kids love it too. So I have two teenagers and we spend most of our time chasing them around. So that's a little bit about me. I'm excited to be here at Fergus Falls Public Schools and to work on things like talent acquisition, talent management, regulatory compliance, and really fostering a positive work environment so we can continue to fulfill our mission and to be the local employer of choice. For today's update, I'm just gonna focus on two specific areas. The first is talent acquisition and the second is compliant readiness. So for talent acquisition, the numbers I'm gonna share tonight really just relate to this school year and specifically individuals who've started since August. So since August, we've onboarded 21 new certified staff. Of those 21 staff, 19 are regular employees and two are long-term subs. And those two long-term subs have full-year assignments. So we have other long-term subs that we have filling in, but these two in particular have full-year assignments. We've also onboarded 42 support staff. 18 of those are special education paraprofessionals, five noon hour supervisors, four food service staff, two student support assistants, two preschool classroom assistants, three custodians, a secretary, a mechanical worker, a para educator, a head coach, and an accompanist. So lots of staff that we've onboarded. And we've also really worked on our substitutes. Our substitutes really are critical in what we do, and we have set up and/or onboarded an additional 25 substitutes so far for the 25-26 school year. And we still need more, so that seems to be a constant need. So I'd appreciate your help in spreading the word that we can always use more substitutes. As a quick snapshot, I'm pleased to say our current openings is a pretty short list. Our full-time openings currently are accountant, behavioral specialist, a para educator, and an ESL teacher. We are hoping to have an accepted offer soon for the ESL position. We also have a part-time ESL opening for IQ and also have a pending offer there, so hoping those will be closed. We're also working on a plan to get our current long-term sub opportunity filled. And then we have a few assistant coaching positions yet to fill. And then we're gonna leave those substitutes for not only our certified staff, but for our support staff open for a while to really help build those pipelines in those critical And then as we continue to promote our openings, we really try to look for ways to continue to have them to be more visible, and not only for those who are here locally already, but for those that might be wanting to relocate to our areas. And so development of internal pathways, targeted outreach, networking, and even university partnerships are a few approaches that I'd like to start incorporate, incorporating to help proactively build our talent pipeline. All right, transitioning topics into compliance readiness. A major focus right now is preparing for Minnesota Paid Leave, which begins January 1st of 2026. HR and finance are working closely together and also with Superintendent Drake to draft policy and procedures in preparation for that new regulation. The required notices do need to be distributed 30 days in advance, so our plan is to get them out in the next couple weeks. In addition to working through policies and notices, we're really also developing tools, processes, and working to be prepared for those leave requests that are gonna come in, leave tracking, and even things like payroll and how the payroll pieces are gonna work. Ensuring we're accurately tracking accrual and usage in addition to developing those tools and really communicating and supporting our employees is gonna be critical. So separate from that Minnesota Paid Leave, there's also a few additional state law changes coming in January, including breaks and lunches. So we're working on being prepared for those as well. So that concludes my update for today, but I'd happy to take any questions, if you have any.
With our Minnesota Paid Leave now that's coming down the pipe, how are we putting that with the employees?
So we're working on policy and we'll be reviewing it with the Policy Committee this coming week, but I think that that would be the goal, is to have it be split 50-50.
Any other?
Not really a question, but maybe a comment. So I had 88 hires in the last few months, and ironically, tonight, we have no hires on our list. Just wanna thank you for stepping in. It's always a challenge to step in. Of course, when Elaine left, she had been here a long time and you had big shoes to fill and from everything I hear, you're doing a great job, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks. It was great to work with Elaine for the time that I was able to, and I keep hearing big shoes, so I really have appreciated her guidance and help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thanks for the report. We will now transition to the board reports for some of the additional committees that the board members are on and take responsibility for outside of this group. So Kirby Anderson.
Yes, Finance Committee has not met since my last report, and the 544 Education Foundation also has not met since my last report, but we will be meeting this Thursday at noon. And we're actually gonna meet at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And because of the government shutdown, we'll probably just be, we're still meeting out there, but we'll meet in one of the classrooms over lunch hour, so it'll be a quick meeting. And that's my report, so unless there's questions.
Anybody with questions? All right, Jenny?
All right, so the Activities Committee met last Friday, November 7th, at 9:00 a.m., and we had a very robust conversation about possible advertising opportunities for the community, and I'll just get into it. So the first thing we discussed was a possibility of revenue sharing between the district as well as the Activities Department when it comes to nights like Minnesota Motor Night. So when there's a company who wants to pay for everybody's, to pay for the gate fees, there's usually a little bit, there's a couple hundred dollars of money left over at the end of that. The gate fees versus what they've been given, there is some left there. Usually that goes to the district. Derek had asked if we could maybe split that with activities so that they could use those funds for things like flags and rugs and banners within our facilities for the activities. So that is something that he and the Activities Committee is going to put a proposal together that will then go to the Finance Committee, that will then likely come to us for approval. Also discussed on expanding the advertising and marketing packages to local businesses. Right now, we, there's just, there's two packages, one for signage and one for programs, so we would like to expand that, which led to our big discussion on turf naming rights as well as scoreboard advertising. As everybody is well aware, we do need to replace that turf coming up here soon, and to try not to dig into our coffers too much, we would like to explore the idea of the possibility of giving our field naming rights. Obviously, we're in a very early stages of this, but we got a lot of information specifically from Alexandria in how they went about doing that with their fields as well as with their scoreboards. If anybody saw the football game last weekend, you could see, you know, their scoreboard was all over the social media and all over the TV, so you could see those advertising opportunities. So it just, it seems like it might be a really great idea for us to just explore that a little bit more. There would be just potentially 10 years, 10 years on the turf and then five years for the scoreboard, and those would be exclusive rights, which companies do not currently have for the signs and the programs. We also discussed online student eligibility. They, the Minnesota State High School League is talking about the logistics of that. Currently, right now, it's supposed to be the district you live in is where you are, wherever, if kids are enrolled in IQ, the district that they live in is where they should be eligible. However, they have been kind of been given the choice of whether or not they can play for the school that they're enrolled in or the district that they live in. It's kind, there hasn't been a whole lot of, it's been blurry, blurry lines. So they are leaning towards basically where the money goes, which would be where the kid is enrolled for IQ. And there have been a lot of conversations within the committees that are talking about that and how if the IQ numbers will count against us, which would, could bump us up pretty high in terms of our, the sectionals and stuff that we're in. And so they're looking into different radius factors and whatnot. They haven't made any decisions yet, and I assume that Kelly will probably have news for us on that once the, once those decisions are made. Another thing that we discussed was a company called Bound, which is a company that deals in scheduling, ticketing, facilities, all of, all of that, that fun stuff that they do, the logistic, logistics and operational side of activities. Right now, we use a company called Arbiter. Bound came in and presented to the CLC about moving over to Bound. And not only would we potentially be saving a lot of money because Bound is a one-stop-shop where Arbiter is, I believe, only scheduling, and then we have to look into a bunch of different ways to get to the facility side and the ticketing side, because obviously we use Arbiter for scheduling, but then we use GoFan for ticketing. So we'll save money in that way, but also if we were to get into Bound early now, we would be a part of a potential revenue sharing program, which would give us 10 cents per ticket and then 10% of their profits. And that would be lifetime. It's just their way of trying to break into the market. So again, no official decisions were made, but that was brought to our attention. We also briefly discussed the tennis courts and their surfacing. That currently is potentially budgeted for fiscal year '28. And then another, another subject we talked about was the boys' basketball state tournament. It has been moved back one week than when it has been held before, so it is now going to be during our spring break. So if our boys make it, that's gonna be interesting for us to handle. This was a U of M decision. They decided since there is a possibility that their women's team could make it, and they make it high enough to be able to host games, they wanted to be able to save their space to host, host the NCAA games as opposed to the state tournament games. So that was their decision. And that was the Activities Meeting. Does anybody have any questions?
Doesn't look like anyone has questions. Thank you, Jenny.
Yes.
For my board report, I did not have a meet and confer meeting. Region One is a technology committee that I sit on out of the, it's based out of Moorhead, and we had our audit presentation there as well. Again, also talking about the implementation of Minnesota Paid Leave and how that's not even fully developed, much less implemented. So it's, it's still, it's an ongoing process. And just talked about the usual criteria about who is signing on for services and staffing and finances, nothing out of the ordinary there. So that's all I had for Region One. Any questions on that? And we'll move on to Kelly Graff's board reports.
So the MSHSL, there's nothing new to report there. The Wellness Committee talked about energy drinks in the high school. Seems that's moderation, seems okay. States most teachers prefer water, though. Middle school and elementary schools are water-only. Talked about vaping compared to other schools, feels like it's better here. However, do still feel as though lots of students do it, we know that they do it and hide it. Mark Anderson does send out weekly emails to families on the slides of the vaping. Food Services talks about the favorites like yogurt cups, pieces of slices, Long John's grape strawberry cups. Don't drink the gravy, but that should be favorite. Some items taking a while to arrive. Wish we still had the stir fry with rice noodles. The Partnership for Health Report, they gave over $1,400 to our elementary schools for active recess equipment, which was nice. Pedal for Fergus Falls is looking for a new board member to join them, so if you have a passion for biking, they are looking for you. We talked about the bar program, which is still pretty new, so we don't have a lot of feedback quite yet. The Dental Program is coming back. The Sealent Program will come in January for Cleveland, and then they'll reach out to the pre-k. Food Service also says there's paper trays lately, they need some dishwashers. Taste of the World is coming back, all buildings except KSS. So China this month, Italy next month. New breakfast menu is at Lincoln, has a kitchen so they can cook there. And they also sent out a staff survey for some occasional healthy snacks, a subscription to a wellness app and things like that for them. And that was the Wellness Committee. And then the Staff Development Committee basically is the same as last report. Staff Development is coming up on Wednesday, November 26th, with that keynote speaker, Ricky White, is back.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Graff? And on to Ms. Hermes, Missy?
Okay, the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee met on October 20th, and I was not able to attend that meeting. Steve went in my place, thank you, Steve. But you heard Amelia Lamar's report, and I'm sure that was a lot of that report.
Okay.
Okay, good. And then Policy Committee, we will be meeting later this month.
All right. And then to you, Stephen Biggsa.
Building, Building and Grounds has not met. Yes, I went to the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee, but Ms. Lamar reported on what, it was the exact same presentation that we got today. And then the other part of the meeting was focused on new course offerings, led by Mr. Anderson, and he'll be presenting on that next board meeting, and he'll do a much better job than I will. You guys have seen that in your board packet of some of the new course offerings, and we can talk about it in more detail when he comes to present. So these guys made it easy for me for my report. That's all I have.
Great. Any questions on that? And then another report from Superintendent Drake.
Did my steps.
Yeah.
So first, some thank yous.
So first, some thank yous. Special thanks to Renee McLet, Sherry Smith, and then also Brenda, Marcy, and Amanda in the District Office for all their work and support of our annual audit. More and more every year is required, and so there are countless hours that go into making sure that the documents are ready, that our auditors have access to the information that they want. And as you could see by our clean audit results, our Business Department, Finance Department's doing a phenomenal job overseeing the district's finances. So with great appreciation to all the work that they put in. Also tomorrow, we have an opportunity, this is one of my favorite days of the year, to honor our veterans. And so first of all, appreciation to all that have served, that we may enjoy the freedoms that we do in our country. But also thanks to the principals for organizing the programs, to our music departments for the wonderful music that is played, and to the speakers that come and share some of their experience serving our country, and always appreciative of our students who do a really nice job of paying attention and honoring our servicemen and women. So we have a high school program at 10:00 a.m. open to the public, a middle school program at 12:35, both of those take place in the Gold Gym. And then Cleveland also typically has a program, but it's kind of family, the families of their students attend that. That's a really nice event, but a little smaller scale. Some congratulations, we have just had a phenomenal fall, probably the best fall for Activities in the seven years that I have been here. So congratulations to the Otter Football Team, they were Section 8 4A champions. We played last Thursday night down in Alexandria against Orono. Our players played hard, but Orono was better on that night, and so our season came to end. But congratulations on a phenomenal season this year. We had two participants, individual participants, in the girls' state cross-country meet. Sixth place went to Cassie Wellman, who's been a perennial figure down at the state meet. And then Carson Lill qualified for state this year and finished 21st. Our boys both recorded personal records while they were down there, which is definitely what you want to do. And so congratulations to Brody Nelson, who finished 74th, and to Micah Mauser, who finished Our girls' swimming and diving team just had a phenomenal weekend of competition last Friday and Saturday up in Warroad. They were sending state qualifiers in 11 of 12 events. And so super proud of them, they were the section champions. You can see on the left, those are second place, largely second place finishers, but you could also qualify for state if you were top three in diving, maybe even top four. So congratulations, it's the first time we've had a diver compete at state in a number of years. But our first place finishers were Olivia Jensen in the 500 freestyle, Esti Verstig in the 200-yard freestyle, Hannah Fear 100-yard backstroke. And then we had two relay teams that finished first, the 200 free relay with Ella Kopinski, Riley Kubila, Olivia Jensen, and Esti Verstig. And then the 400 free relay with Esti Verstig, Evie Verstig, Olivia Jensen, and Ella Kopinski. So congratulations on a phenomenal section, and good luck in the competition at state. And we will have a state send-off for the girls' swimming and diving team coming up. In light of the federal shutdown, there is a community event that I just wanted to draw people's attention to, that's the Be a Villager Feed-a-Thon, that's taking place for folks in our community tomorrow, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the YMCA. Thanks for everyone that has graciously donated or plans to participate in that. And then on the heels of that, we have an annual Student Council food drive that I want to call the community's attention to. That will take place from November 17th through the 21st, it's the week before Thanksgiving, and they collect non-perishable food items for our local food show.
Tomorrow, they are assembling the meal kits. So if you want to come help assemble meal kits, for those who are in need, that will be tomorrow from 2:00 to 7:00, and then distribution will be Wednesday from 2:00 to 7:00.
Yep, thanks for the clarification. Then, one of the things that I often look at in terms of just overall health of a school district and what's taking place, obviously, for me, it always starts with academics, but our activities play a huge role in developing self-confidence, leadership skills, teamwork, collaboration, communication. And then there's the fine arts component as well. And then I would add vocational programming in there, too. But our fine arts are going to be on display now, coming up, we're entering our annual Fall Musical, that's Matilda this year, with evening performances at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then a Sunday matinee at 2:00 p.m. Tickets are $10 for adults, $5 for students, and the cast and crew just do a phenomenal job with these, so I strongly encourage people to check it out. Then we kicked out our district fall newsletter, and we just finished, it's hard to believe, but our first quarter just came to a wrap here last Friday. The first trimester is scheduled to end right before Thanksgiving, and then we have a Staff Development Day coming up, as mentioned earlier, on the 26th, right prior to our Thanksgiving break. So there's lots of great information on the district newsletter, so please take time to check it out. And then coming up is American Education Week, so an opportunity to say thanks to our teachers, support staff, Food Service, Office, Custodial, all of those folks, Mechanical, that play a vital role in delivering a wonderful education to our students. So we'll have an opportunity to celebrate those efforts here, coming up in another week. And then lastly, I have another Community Connections scheduled for the public. This is an open invitation to come and ask any questions that you have, share any concerns that you may have. We take compliments as well. So that is Thursday, November 20th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And look forward to touching base with some folks in our community. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for the Superintendent? Apparently not. Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to our general consent items, and for consideration for approval, our three separate items, first of all, our minutes from the October 27th, 25 regular board meeting, and also for consideration are the Bills and Treasuries Report. So I'll turn that over to you, Jenny.
All right, I'm gonna start with the Treasuries Report. For our, for October of 2025, our beginning balances for the General Fund, we had a beginning balance of $24,239,931.14. Ending balance at $24,249,71,345. Food Service started at $971,142, ended at $998,615. Community Service Fund started at $28,313, ended at $92,225. Construction Fund started at $479,448, ended at $417,852. Debt Service Fund started at $2,652,019, ended at $3,875,159. Trust Fund started at $149,001, ended at $146,949. And the Activities Fund started at $341,874, ended at $353,457. Our total receipts for the month of October totaled $6,26,152.66. Most of this came from levy and aid. Our total invoices paid out for the month of October was $2,639,312.3, and the total payroll that was paid out was $1,392,466.25. Moving on to our bills for the time period of October 28th to November 30th, for our General Fund, our bills total was $1,362,005.68. Food Service Fund, $51,454.15. The Community Service Fund bills were $7,042.23, and the Student Activities Fund was $7,307.64 for a grand total of our invoices paid out for $1,427,809.70.
Okay. Very good. The last item on the general consent items would be personnel, except for we have no hires or resignations or fires this month, this meeting, I guess. So with that, is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved, and we'll move past unfinished business, because we don't have anything for that category, and, and under new business, we'll respond then to the three public reports we had tonight. First, I'll seek a motion to approve the fiscal year '25 Fergus Falls Public Schools' Financial Audit Report. Would someone offer that motion? So moved. And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the audit, the presentation, any questions in regard to?
I just wanted to second Jeff's thank you of Renee and the staff, the Business Office staff, they just do a great job every year, and no exception this year, so it's always nice to see no surprises. So thanks, Renee, and to the rest of the Business Office staff.
Right on. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of approving that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We'll move on, seeking a motion to approve the '24-25 Fergus Falls Public Schools Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report that Amelia Lamar presented. Would someone offer that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next, we'll seek a motion to approve the '24-25 Fergus Falls Public Schools Achievement and Integration Report, as presented by Superintendent Drake. I'll make that motion. All right, and a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That's approved. We have before us, we received information in a packet, a request for a spring break baseball trip approval, and this would be during the, the week off. So we have some information with details, is there a motion to approve that spring break baseball trip?
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that?
It's always nice to see an outside activity like this that's during a break, and also being paid for by supporters.
Yeah.
So I guess the only caveats we saw during the Activities Meeting was, because it's during spring break, now with the basketball thing and the band trip, they're all gonna be the same week, so if there's students that are in multiple areas of co-curricular, they're gonna have some decisions to make, but still, it's a good deal.
Yeah, agreed. All right, any other discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have that bid for the Kennedy Secondary School Pool Upgrade Project for $616,000 with BCI Construction. Would someone endorse an agreement to, with that company, to make that improvement?
I'll move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. We have before us a request from the City of Fergus Falls for easement appraisal waiver and an MDA report use approval. This was, these are, that's a cluster of words that might not all make sense, but we've got that information in our packet. Is there someone willing to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have two very exciting motions upcoming, looking for a motion to approve an agreement with McDowell Company and Tremco CPG in the amount of $204,350 for roof replacement project at Cleveland. Will someone make that motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion there?
Did this come in lower than what we anticipated?
Renee, did this come in lower than we had anticipated? All right. Yeah, and I referenced it exciting, just because it's been a long time in, in the process, so thank you again for that as well. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, looking for a motion for an agreement with McDowell Company and Tremco CPG in the amount of $183,950 for the roof replacement at Adams Elementary School.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved as well. We have a joint resolution with Fergus Falls Education Association honoring veterans. So whereas Independent School District 544 has veterans in its employ who have served in the armed forces, and whereas the district and Fergus Falls Education Association wish to recognize all those who have given so much for their country, be it hereby resolved that the School District 544 and Fergus Falls Education Association honor and appreciate all veterans for their dedication to our country and service to others. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
All right. Kelly will second. Any discussion there?
More just thank you.
Yeah. Very good, and Clerk, will you please take roll?
Yes, Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Kelly Graff?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. That concludes our regular meeting. We'll continue with a board work session with a couple of topics on that, Pioneer Tax Abatement Request and Instructional Models. So with that, we'll be back, by the way, we'll be back on Monday, the 24th, here at 5:15. Would someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.